Nearly two years after Ralph Yarle nearly lost his life, the man who shot him, Andrew Lester, is changing, changing what we all thought was going to be a trial that was set to begin in the next couple of weeks. Instead, Andrew Lester is changing his plea in the Ralph Yarle shooting. This came down yesterday. Fox four, to its credit, had it first, and we're glad you're here on a Friday morning on KCMO. Now, it is always going to be gross to me that people will want to assume this was always driven by race, and they are so dug in on the racial narrative of this story from two Aprils ago. And you might be new to Kansas City. You may not remember this story. It did get national and international attention when a teenage boy named Ralph Yarle went to go pick up his brother from a friend's home in April of 2023. And he showed up at the wrong house. He went to 115th Street in the Northland instead of going to 115th Terrace. And he went to, he went to Andrew Lester's home. He was a man in his eighties, and he starts banging on the door and looking for his brother. Turns out he's at the wrong house. Andrew Lester, once again, living by himself in his eighties, gets startled, brings a gun to the front door and shoots Ralph Yarle and nearly kills him. Now Ralph Yarle, thank goodness, is alive and able to tell his story. But the immediate reaction was old white man shoots young black boy. And that's what made this an international story. Let's just be honest about it. If it's white guy, white guy, no news. If it's black guy, black guy, no news. But it's old white man, young black boy, people allege racism, and that makes it a national story. So this has been kind of on and off percolating for the last, oh, I don't know, 18 months to two years at this point. And it was expected that Andrew Lester was going to take this to trial. Well, something changed here in the last couple of days. And Fox four had the report first that it's something nobody saw coming until just a few days ago. There was every indication that Andrew Lester was going to fight the charges against him for assault and armed criminal action. His attorney even said at one point that from his view, the state getting a conviction was going to be very hard against 86 year old Andrew Lester. But now he's changing his plea. I can't sit here and say that's the wrong decision. The man's 86 years old, does he not want to go through with the trial? I don't know. Is it too much stress on him? Possibly. I have no idea why he would change it at this point in time. But the larger story is this. The way the media framed this in Kansas City and around the world is something that frankly, has always been disturbing to me, not because Andrew Lester isn't a racist. I don't know if he is or not. You don't know if he is or not. I don't know the man. But the assumption that if a white guy ends up shooting somebody on his own property, who's at his door that he doesn't know, and that individual happens to be black, the assumption that that automatically is a racially motivated action is the conclusion that everybody jumped to almost two years ago. And we just don't have the evidence of that. And frankly, it was even something that was alluded to on the Fox four news piece last night.
The story garnering national and international attention as the question was raised, did race play a role in this case, something the family believes? But neither the state or defense introduced in this process that now finds itself heading for a resolution before a jury could weigh in.
My emotion is mixed. It's anger, and then it's, thank God it's gonna be over.
Yes, and thank God for everybody. It is going to be over. I will say that much as well. It is going to come to an end. But the fact that you had somebody, once again, just willy nilly called a racist just because he's white and the person he shot happens to be black, is a world that we have to get out of in this country. Now, maybe Andrew Lester is a racist. I don't know. But I'll sit here right now and tell you that the fact that people are just assuming that because of the racial makeup of each individual in this case, that has always been disturbing to me. And it's very much anti-American is what it is at its very core. Now, we also had some other big news yesterday here in Kansas City. And that was the news that a federal district court issued a preliminary injunction suspending the city of Kansas City, Missouri's ban on what they call landlord discrimination of renters using vouchers to help pay their rent, specifically ones that are part of the Section Eight program. So this is something that Mayor Lucas was very high on, very hot on when they rolled this out. Gosh, a year, year and a half, two years ago at this point. It's been a while. But he ended up trying to make it so that basically landlords would have to take Section Eight. Well, yesterday, federal district court said, nope, not for now. They are putting a suspension on that requirement from the city of Kansas City, Missouri. And there are landlords all over Kansas City that rightfully so are celebrating this. Requiring a landlord to take Section Eight, no matter where they are in town, is completely unfair. It's not an anti-poor person thing. It's not an anti-Section Eight thing. That's not how this should be framed. That's not how it should be looked at. It's simply saying, does somebody who owns a piece of property have the opportunity to pick and choose who they want to stay in that property? And I'm not talking about like, all right, don't jump to the race thing. We just talked about the race deal with Ralph Yarle. Not about race, not about discrimination based on that, right? Discrimination based on whether or not you're actually paying your own way when it comes to your rent. That is not a racial discrimination thing. That's not about sexual orientation. That's not about any of those things that are protected under, under law. This is completely different from that. It's saying, who is really paying your way? Who is actually paying your rent? And this is something that had landlords in Kansas City up in arms when it was announced by the city. And like everything, the legal process taking forever. I feel like we haven't talked about this in a year and a half, but it just came down yesterday. And the city put out a statement saying, "The actions taken by landlords to challenge the program in courts and in Jefferson City jeopardizes housing access for over 17,000 Kansas Cityans waiting for housing vouchers." Which leaves over 17,000 Kansas Cityans still looking for a stable place to live in our city. "Having experienced homelessness in my own life," says Mayor Lucas, "I can only hope that landlords spend time this winter working with the city, housing advocates in our community, and their renters to help people get and stay off the streets here in Kansas City rather than looking to close the door to housing access through high-priced lobbyists and lawyers at our legislatures and in our courts." That's the official statement from Mayor Lucas yesterday. Well, first off, there are high-priced lobbyists across the board. Can we drop that notion that just helping the little guy on Section Eight? I mean, please. There are high-priced lobbyists and high-priced attorneys across the board here. Spare me that. False narrative, because that's exactly what it is. And I want 17,000 Kansas Cityans who are waiting on housing vouchers to, if they qualify, get them and be able to live somewhere. And there are plenty of places that will absolutely take those vouchers. There are. But requiring somebody to take them is something that a lot of people have been bothered by since the city tried to get that passed. I think he's done, man. I think Travis Kelsey's done. 6:20, good morning, happy Friday. Maybe he's having a big Valentine's Day with his love, Taylor Swift. But Travis Kelsey, of course, had himself a bad Super Bowl. We all know that by now, not trying to relive it, but we know he had it. And you guys know how NFL Films always has like cameras and they've got microphones and everybody during these Super Bowls?
Yeah.
So this I saw last night, I don't know if either of you guys saw this, but it's a moment towards the end of the Super Bowl between Travis Kelsey and Patrick Mahomes. And well, I'll just play the seven second clip and you can hear it for yourself. Love you, brother. Kelsey's voice is a little muffled there, but he says, "Love you, dog." And then he says, "I owe you a lot for what you've done." And they're embracing, and they're hugging like two guys who may not be on the field together ever again. I don't know if you're thinking I'm reading too much into it there, Mark, but have you changed your mind at all, or do you still think he's coming back next year?
I'm still 50/50.
You're 50/50?
Yeah.
Are you 50/50 back there, John, or are you leaning my way?
I got him coming back after all is said and done.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
He might be 50/50 in his own mind right now.
Okay. Wow. So I'm the only guy, the three of us, who thinks that he's not coming back at this point?
I'm not going to be shocked, but I think he's got one more year and they got the deal. And I don't know that he wants to go out necessarily that way, but I know he's right now going, I don't want to work. I don't want to do all that crap again.
I think that's a reasonable conclusion to come to.
Highly motivating factor.
Yeah. Your body just got beat up for the last eight months. It's like, oh, man, at 35, 36, do I want to keep doing that? Now, this is always weird to me because I'm like a year older than Travis. And to think about your career in the standpoint of, I'm too old for this, is just bizarre to me. Like, don't get me wrong, it is getting harder for me to like get up off the floor when I'm playing with my kids. I admit that than it was maybe three or four years ago. All of a sudden, I'm like, man, my knees are killing me here. Oh, gosh.
And when you get old enough, you start saying, is there anything else I can do while I'm down here?
Yesterday, I felt like an old man. I was getting up off the floor and I'm like, woo, man, jeez, these knees are killing me here. What's going on? But I'll worry about that as I get older, but I hear Travis.
Not kipping out of it, just propping up on the couch.
Oh, man. But you know, when you think about these guys, I mean, Travis is an old man in the sport. He is. And it was on display on Sunday. So I saw that embrace and you know, it just for me furthers the narrative that I hear a guy who sounds like he's done. Now, can he change course? Absolutely. But he sounds to me like he's done. In the meantime, back here in Kansas City, do we think any of the guys are still around? Or are they all off to the islands or off to warmer weather or their official homes? What are we thinking?
I'd say they're probably gone.
Yeah, I think so too. Especially when they saw the weather forecast, I'm out of here. Jeez, it's 18 degrees right now. It's the warmest morning we've had all week, I think, in this town. And do not look ahead to next week when Tuesday's going to be zero degrees and Wednesday's going to be minus six. Thursday will be minus nine degrees.
Chiefs had a great tackle, John. Oh, I think he was from Iowa, but he liked to ice fish. He wouldn't have had to go very far this weekend.
Not these days. He would have been hanging around for a few weeks. Oh, this is great. But I don't blame them if they're getting out of here. I mean, my goodness, body's getting beat up for months. Go get some warm weather, fellas. It's good with us. But you've got problems now because at least in certain school districts, they're already running out of snow days. In Alatha, they're saying right now they're going to be okay. But there was a big story on Woke 41 Action News last night talking about how each school district in Kansas must choose a 186 day schedule or 1,116 hour school year. So right now, if they were to go over the allotted days, they would need to either add more days to the end of the school year or add five to 10 minutes to each school day. For example, Alatha School District has four snow days with three of them already used. Wednesday, yesterday, or two days ago, was supposed to be a half day, but that was canceled because of the snow. So right now, Alatha is saying that they were already scheduled off yesterday and today, so they're not discussing adding more time to the school year. They've got one snow day left, just to use Alatha as the example. Here's the problem. You know, and I know, if it's minus nine at the bus stop next Thursday, they ain't going. Or at least they're not going on time. They'll do one of those two hour delays that they've done.
Any indication how virtual learning days factor into snow days? They don't count those, do they? Because if I were a kid and going, hey, I'm not gonna let, you know, if it's not a snow day or if virtual learning is not, should be a regular day of school, I guess is what I'm trying to imply.
I just don't think that certain districts do virtual learning. I mean, Mark, do your girls, have they ever had virtual learning? I know, like, I think Lee Summit does it, but I've never heard of Alatha doing it.
No, yeah, they haven't done it since 2020.
Oh, thank goodness. And frankly, I think that's a total cop out. All right? Get the kids in the freaking classroom. I don't want to hear about virtual learning to make up for a real day of school. I just think that is ridiculous, and we've learned what a failure it is. It just seems like an opportunity for districts to say, well, we had a school day today.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Come on, stop that.
Pretty high absenteeism, I would imagine.
I would imagine as well.
I think high schoolers could do that better, but they don't want to split up the snow days between elementary, middle school, and high school in the same district.
Keep it district wise.
That's a good point, and I don't blame them for doing that either. Either we're all having school or we're not. I mean, it's really, this is, let's not overcomplicate this, guys. And no one is learning a damn thing sitting on a laptop in the house. Okay? We learned that the hard way for a full year back in 2020. Don't try to pull that nonsense again on us. Don't do it. And speaking of working from home, working from home, or you know, doing school from home, do you hear this all-time rant from JP Morgan CEO Jamie Dimon? Oh, this was incredible. It's a leaked audio clip of Jamie Dimon, who runs JP Morgan. And he just went off on the work from home thing that we all know is just absurd at this point. It doesn't make your business as efficient. It's not something that works if you want to have a well-run operation. And he just trashed the entire work from home model. He's cursing left and right. Mark had to put 10 bleeps in this thing, and I'll play it for you right after the news on 95.7 FM KCMO Talk Radio. How do you not love this from JP Morgan CEO Jamie Dimon? Uh, this call was leaked in the last, oh, 12 hours or so, and it's gone viral since then. Uh, Jamie Dimon is the chief executive of JP Morgan Chase. He met with employees in Columbus, Ohio this week, and he celebrated a newly opened bank branch there. He then held an internal town hall meeting where employees asked him about workplace issues. And his rant on remote work slash work from home was a thing of beauty. Now, before you freak out and say, well, I work from home, there are industries who are working from home before COVID. There are large corporations around the country that have had work from home in place for many years. There are guys I'm friends with in the neighborhood who have worked from home for 15 years. I mean, it's not new for them or their industry. But obviously, for many, it became this thing during COVID, and now it's back to the forefront of the conversation in part because of what's happening with the federal government, where Trump said, hey, get your butt back into the office, and if not, you're fired. And there was this outrage like, oh, my goodness, so.
How dare you?
You can't possibly have us come back to the office. Um, yes, we can. And yeah, you should. Businesses run more efficiently. There is far more creativity when you're sitting in a room with a group of people, right? Putting together, um, plans for the business, plans for the industry, whatever it might be. It's just a better work environment. In most cases, not every case, if you're running your own small business, totally different story, right? But Jamie Dimon, he's had enough of this work from home nonsense, and he made it very clear in this leaked audio.
A lot of you were on the Zoom, and you were doing the following, okay? You know, looking at your mail, sending texts to each other about where the other person is. Okay? Not paying attention, not reading your stuff, you know? And if you don't think that slows down efficiency, creativity, creates rudeness, and stuff, it does. Okay? And when I found out that people are doing that, you don't do that in my meetings. You're going to meet with me, you got my attention, you got my focus. I don't bring my phone. I'm not sending texts to people. Okay? It simply doesn't work, and it doesn't work for creativity. It slows down decision-making. And don't give me this work from home Friday works. I call a lot of people on Friday, they're not a person to get ahold of. But here are the problems, okay? And they are substantial, okay? Which is, the young generation is being damaged by this. That may, they may, it may not be in your particular staff, but they are being left behind. They're being left behind socially, ideas, meeting people.
That's what I'm talking about, Jamie Dimon. That's right, my man. That's outstanding. He's spot on with everything he just said there. Some of you might be offended by it. I don't care. That's what needs to be said. There are people who want to turn us into Europe. That's what they want to do. We're going to take some siestas in the mid-afternoon. We're going to work four days a week. We're going to work 32-hour work weeks, but still get paid for 40 hours. Just ask Bernie Sanders. I mean, that's how the world works, right? That's what Bernie Sanders would tell you, live from his commune this morning. Or no, sorry, now he has three homes because he's been on the government dole for five decades. But America became great because obviously we had the best government setup in the entire world, and we busted our tails in a way that no other country did. We cared about family and faith and working hard, and that is what brought us together as a nation to create the greatest experiment in the history of mankind. And there are some people who want to throw it away. And I love this line there, "Don't tell me work from home on Friday works." He's like, I call people on Friday and no one's around. Yeah, because they're playing golf or they're playing tennis. I mean, not in Kansas City in February, but you get the point.
So like, it's not casual Friday?
I mean, I'm fine with going back to the days of casual Friday. At least people are in the office, not sitting on a Zoom call in their underwear, pulling a Jeffrey Toobin or something like that, you know? And then you got Dimon continued this leaked audio rant. Here he is continuing, JP Morgan CEO.
Now, you have a choice. You don't have to work at JP Morgan. So the people of you who don't want to work at the company, that's fine with me. I'm not, I'm not mad at you. Don't be mad at me. It's a free country. You can walk on your feet, you know? But this company is going to set our own standards and do it our own way. And, and I've had it with this kind of stuff. And you know, I, I come in, you know, I've been working seven days of weeks since COVID, and I come in and I, where's everybody else? But they're here and there, and the Zooms, and the Zoomers don't show up. And people said they didn't get stuff. So that's not how you run a great company. We didn't build this great company by doing that, by doing the same semi-disease shit that everybody else does.
I am in love with his enthusiasm on this topic. Jamie Dimon is going to be 69 years old next month. He doesn't need this, man. He doesn't. He's made more money than he could ever make and spend, right? He's clearly got a passion for what he does. That's what's very evident when you hear this guy. And I get it, when you're the CEO of a major company, now you should be working harder than everybody else, but you also want people who are with the company to at least show like they care. And he's like, I show up around here, and I'm like, where is everybody? And the point there that also was so key is you don't have to work here. You don't. You can vote with your feet. And as he said, I don't, I don't hate you for that, but don't be mad at me, right? I mean, there's, there's no ill will here, but this is how this company is going to run. And it's very similar to something, you know, Trump was talking about the other day. I guess this was probably last week when Trump brought up the fact that, hey, you know, people are working from home, air quotes, but they're not actually working at all. He brought that up, and he was spot on to bring that up. Because you know, and I know, people who have been working from home, and they ain't working a full eight-hour day, all right? They got a million things going on at the house, and they just can't possibly be nearly as efficient as they would be if they were in an office somewhere. So this is another thing in the wake of COVID where the pendulum is swinging back to where it needs to be. So many things like policing issues, right? I mean, we focused on that here in Kansas City for quite some time. Um, to masking things, to how we operate our schools, to how our businesses run. Uh, people are realizing that so much of what we went through was just inefficient and stupid. And now even guys like Jamie Dimon of JP Morgan swinging it back the other way and saying, yeah, those days are over. We're done with this. We're not continuing with this nonsense. No way, no how. We are less than two hours away from Bill O'Reilly being on the show, 8:30 this morning. He will be here on KCMO. Do not miss that conversation. And Roger Marshall, Kansas US Senator, he's coming up at 7:05, uh, just over 20 minutes from now because he had a big day yesterday. He got a shout out from Bobby Kennedy for helping him get across the finish line as Health and Human Services Secretary. So, uh, Marshall was a big part of getting Bobby Kennedy across the finish line. And then Marshall also put out a statement yesterday regarding Donald Trump exploring reciprocal tariffs. We know that that could have a big impact on Kansas farmers. Here's what Roger Marshall said yesterday in a statement on X. Gone are the days of unfair trade deals that give foreign nations the upper hand. Today, President Trump put the world on notice. America will no longer be taken advantage of. Reciprocal tariffs are strong strategic negotiating tools that ultimately strike better trade deals, ensure long-term economic growth, and strengthen our national security. With President Trump's leadership, I am confident we will bring more jobs back to our country, prioritize American-made goods, and level the playing field. That was the statement from Roger Marshall. He will expand on that statement when he joins us just after 7 o'clock on KCMO. This is the gift that just keeps on giving. Emmanuel Cleaver, Kansas City Congressman, is now bragging about his goofy viral clip from a couple of days ago outside of the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. His team is actually promoting that absurd, nonsensical rant that he went on against Elon Musk. Like, they think this makes him look good. I kid you not. This is from the Facebook page, and somebody tagged me in this yesterday from the Cleaver for Congress Facebook page. And I thought to myself, maybe it's like a fan page, you know? Not that there would be like many people on the fan page. Be like, you know, Cleaver's kid and a couple of other people. But no, this is the official campaign page for Emmanuel Cleaver. And they share the YouTube video of Cleaver sending a message, as they put it, to Elon Musk. And the caption on Cleaver's Facebook page reads as follows. The CFPB has saved taxpayers millions of dollars since its inception. That's the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. And operates at a fraction of that cost. If Elon Musk and President Trump were truly on the side of the American taxpayer, they'd keep their hands off of it. And they share the YouTube link to this awful rant that made absolutely no sense.
Elon, take your musty millions and musty Moscow rights to the moon. Because if you don't, we're going to stand up, we're going to speak out, we're going to march, we're going to do anything we need to do to make sure that the people of this country understand that the CFPB is for them. You get your musty hands off of our money or go to Mouse Town. You muster mu mu mu. You muster mu mu mu.
We got the farm animal noises from Congressman Cleaver this week. It's gone viral, and now he's bragging about that rant. You see, any normal person would be like, oh, that was kind of embarrassing. I kind of lost my cool there, and that didn't make much sense now, did it? But Cleaver's Facebook page yesterday shared the YouTube link to the rant and is bragging about said rant. If that's the best you can do, if that's supposed to be a rant that is like supposed to impress your constituents, then boy, the bar sure is low around here when it comes to the fifth congressional district. I happen to think we can do better. And I love how, well, I don't love it, but he does kind of share what he really thinks about your tax dollars when he says, keep your hands off our money. Now, hold on a second there, chump. It ain't your money. It's my money. It's your money as you're driving to work to pay taxes to the federal government. It is your money. It is our money. It is not Emmanuel Cleaver's money. It is not the government's money. The government doesn't have anything without us. It doesn't create anything without the private sector. So for Cleaver to take the approach of, yeah, it's our money, uh, no, it's not. And it's not the minions in the bureaucracies and the federal government's money either. You are servants of the people. Let's not forget that, okay? I know there's this notion that we work for you, but no, you work for us. If you want to get back into the private sector, you know, maybe you can open a car wash some there, somewhere and do it that way. But as long as you're going to keep that job in DC, you work for us. That's how this works. The text line is 913-408-7957. John?
I think Kate at the local bar, the happy hour should feature a Moscow mu mu mule. On special today, Moscow mu mu mule.
Mu 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 mule. Oh, man. I'm taking Kate out for dinner tonight. I'll order one of those. Give me a Moscow moo 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 moo. I'll just start making cow noises. those. Give me a Moscow moo 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 moo. I'll just start making cow noises when I walk in and start ordering my first drink. On the text line, Pete, please stop playing the Cleaver rant. It's making me sick. Now, why is it making you sick? It's one of the funniest things I've heard this year. And it's a guy who's been representing Kansas City and arguably embarrassing Kansas City for years. And no one, no one heard from Cleaver during Joe Biden's four years in office. I didn't see him anywhere doing anything, did you? And now 23 days in the Trump, he's giving these unhinged bizarre rants and he's making animal noises. I, this is a gem, man. I mean, it's just crazy.
You muster mu mu mu.
I, I don't know what it is. You don't know what it is. All I know is it's wildly entertaining. And I will sign up for that every single day because gosh, we need some laughs around here. I'll tell you that right now. Oh my goodness. Now, on that note, um, there was new poll that came out yesterday on what people want from their parties, specifically one side. And there was a very notable figure that also just, I mean, lambasted his own side. Will they ever listen? I hope they do for their sake. I think it's better for the country if they listen, but I'm not convinced that anybody will listen. Thehill.com writing here, in a Gallup poll released yesterday, Democrats today are more likely to say they want their party to become more moderate than they were four years ago.
Talk about a bombshell.
Who would have ever seen that coming? Said everybody with common sense sarcastically. So I play this and I'll share this story in the wake of, you know, Emmanuel Cleaver's bizarre rant from outside of the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau the other day where he's ranting and raving about how dare Donald Trump try to shrink the size of government? How dare he bring in Elon Musk to try to find waste and fraud and abuse from the taxpayer dollar? It's like, dude, this is pretty popular stuff across the board and you guys are totally missing the boat here. You have an opportunity to get on board and moderate yourselves and say, okay, you know what? Let's just try to do this, but also protect what we want to protect, protect the agencies we want to protect, but also understand that, you know what? People are down with this. It's pretty popular. Instead, Cleaver's going on these unhinged rants and then he's bragging about it on his Facebook page.
You muster mu mu mu.
Moo 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 moo. Roof roof roof. That's Mark when he gets home later today. Roof roof roof. Oink oink oink. Get any oinking in there, Mark, at the house? Or you're not an oinker?
Uh, we, we did just get a little new pig toy.
Oh, you did?
This last week, so.
You'll be oinking away this weekend.
We'll get some oinks going.
All right. Maybe that'll be Cleaver next week. We need Cleaver to start oinking. Make him squeal like a pig, you know?
There you go.
So you've got now 45% of Democrats in this new Gallup poll released yesterday who say they want their party to become more moderate. This is up from 40 years ago when 34% of Democrats said they wanted their party to become more moderate. Now, here's the problem. Normal people get polled in these polls, but normal people are not the loudest voices on social media and they're not the loudest voices on network news and they're not the loudest voices on cable news. And this is what's going to make it a very difficult balancing act for their party. Their party has massive problems in rural areas. They're getting clobbered in rural areas. Republicans also made gains in urban areas. I mean, heck, you saw places like Brooklyn, New York and Queens, New York moved to the right for Donald Trump in this last election cycle. You've had massive gains with the Hispanic community in the Republican Party. You've had not as big of gains, but some gains also in, uh, the black communities as well. So they're literally getting better in basically every demographic except for old white people. They're the ones ironically shifting to the left. When people used to always say, oh, that's the bread and butter of the Republican Party. It's just a bunch of old white people. Well, that's not happening. That demographic is actually shifting left. Remember that CBS News poll we shared over the weekend based on age? The age bracket that approved of Donald Trump the least was 65 plus. Trump was plus 10 with 18 to 29 year olds. He was up eight with 35 to 44 year olds. And then 45 to 64, he was like plus 12. The 65 plus is where he was 50 50. That's wild. And part of it to me too is like, okay, Trump's 78 years old. I get it. He's an old guy. But who's like the macho man right now in the Democratic Party? Who's the cool face of the Democratic Party? You guys are laughing in there because you know that person doesn't exist. Like Chuck Schumer's out there, look at my avocado. Corona's going up. Oh my gosh, your Super Bowl party's not going to be the same. I hope the Chiefs score a goal. What? Is Mayor Pete your macho man? Who is it? Obama's nowhere to be found. No one's seen Obama in weeks since the inauguration announced out of that Jimmy Carter's funeral. Obama's checked out. You see men, I mean, leaving Democratic Party in droves. Like where's your, Trump's 78, but he's a cultural phenomenon, right? That really goes beyond looking at the guy and saying he's 78 years old. And considering he's basically the same age as Joe Biden, he feels like he's 20 years younger than the guy. So it does go back to the old adage and cliche of age just being a number. But where, where is their face? Where is their future? Where is their little bit of, of a macho man mentality that can connect with especially young men right now, but I would just say young people in general? That doesn't exist for them. And I saw this clip from, uh, Jon Stewart. You know, Jon Stewart's been a lifelong Democrat and he was on his show, his podcast yesterday, and he compared the Democratic Party right now to his beloved New York Giants.
Do the Giants feel like the Democratic Party in that the personnel decisions that they're, everything that they are doing could not work out more humiliatingly and continues to do so. And I don't know what kind of a draft pick the Democrats are going to get this year. I don't even know if there's a draft lottery in politics or any of those kinds of things, but boy, they better clean their shit up if they want to compete because the ass kicking that's been laid upon them in all aspects sometimes feels like a permanent state.
Now, to use his football analogy, here's the problem. Politics is much more like college football than it is the NFL in the sense that if your team stinks in the NFL, you get the top draft pick, right? That's how it works. That's why the Chiefs continue to have one of the last picks in the NFL draft. The idea is to create equity. Well, that's not the case in politics. In fact, it's more like college football in the sense that the best teams just get to double down and oftentimes can get the best recruits. Right now, would you rather be recruiting to the Democratic Party or to the Republican Party? Based on the leadership that you see every single day, based on the bench that is out there. There is no bench right now in the Democratic Party. I mean, they're talking about Kamala Harris giving it another run in 2028. I mean, that is just, that is a comically awful idea. Stephen A. Smith is getting talked about as a presidential candidate on the Democratic side of the aisle. Meantime, you look at the Republicans when Trump's done here in four years and obviously JD Vance comes to mind, but I mean, there's, there's half a dozen people. You're still going to be talking about Ron DeSantis, Marco Rubio. I mean, and all these people are like under the age of 50 for the most part.
What do we know about the definition of insanity relative to the Democrats?
Yeah. Let's do the same thing over and over and over again.
Expecting a different result.
And expect a different result. That is exactly what they're appearing to double down on despite the fact that their voters are saying, hey, moderate a bit, um, calm down a little bit on some of the social craziness. That's what the Gallup poll came out with yesterday. Their own voters want them to moderate. But there are people right now who are not willing to look in the mirror and say, here's what we've done wrong. Here's what we have to do to start connecting with regular working class voters again. They had that voter on lockdown up until about five years ago, 10 years ago, maybe. And they are just hemorrhaging them left and right to appeal to the MSNBC crowd that I promise you is not growing in size and it's very old. Of all the cable networks in demo, that's what media outlets try to get. 25 to 54 year olds. I'm not saying we don't love you if you're over 54 years old. We have members of the show who are over 54 years old. I won't name them, but you know who they are.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, the coveted age demographic for any media outlet is 25 54. MSNBC has the smallest 25 to 54 year old audience in cable news. When you stack up the big three, CNN, Fox, and MSNBC. And Fox's in demo audience is double, at least in January, CNN and MSNBC's combined number. Younger people are flocking to Fox and they are fleeing MSNBC. And that is just another warning sign that should be going off in the party saying, you know what? What do, what do people want right now? Especially people who can be voters for years and decades to come. And they're not doing themselves any favors. Wrapping up with Friday with Kevin Keatsman. Coming up with Uncancelled on KCMO. What's happening, my man? How are you?
I got about three or four pages of stuff here, Pete, and I think you've covered them all today. So I don't think I have much coming up.
Oh, come on, come on with that. My gosh. You know how many people are just like, hey, I'm ready for Kevin at 10 o'clock. Four hours of this guy's enough.
I'm hearing more and more of the show and of your show. And then I'm like, uh-oh, scratch that, scratch that, scratch that.
No, no.
Seriously, that was mind bending what you were talking about with those GoFundMe pages today.
How crazy is that?
It just stopped me in my tracks, the numbers.
I didn't think it was going to be that big of a discrepancy that Ralph Yarles GoFundMe had three and a half million and Sean Brady, the restaurant owner killed at Brady and Fox had $2,300.
I, I mean, I don't even know what that says about our country.
I know.
And what has been force fed down our throats for so long. It's tragic.
And that's why, you know, the Yarle families coming out and still saying that Andrew Lester's a racist because they got three and a half million reasons to say that.
Hmm.
Whether we know it or not.
There's plenty of people and we know what the percentages are. We know 30, 40% of the country will buy into that. Every single time it is stated, they just go in hook, line and sinker.
Mm-hmm. It's sad.
It is.
And then Sean Brady like literally just gets gunned down trying to protect his own vehicle and $2,300 bucks.
Right. He was like taking the trash out, wasn't he?
Yeah, yeah.
And they were stealing cars?
Yeah, yeah.
Unbelievable.
It's just crazy, man. Absolutely crazy.
It is.
Um, did you see what happened or what is happening today in Philadelphia? They're having their big parade.
Oh, good for them.
I know.
Good for them.
Good for them, right?
I like all these people like Saquon Barkley, such a good dude. He got full truckloads of Bud Light for his offensive line. I'm like, really? It's free.
Yeah.
Okay. Saquon spent nothing on the beer or the beer trucks. Don't make a hero out of a guy because he shotgunned a beer after the Super Bowl and a beer company jumped on it and delivered. They, they're each riding in a beer truck. I don't know if you saw this.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Oh, yeah. The offensive lineman, each get a giant truck of Bud Light to give away, toss, share, drink with their teammates, whatever it is they're going to do. And everybody's making Saquon a hero because he got these for his line. He didn't get them. Some marketing person called up and says, uh, can we use your name if we do this for the linemen?
Sure. And Bud Light needs the help desperately.
Still.
Yeah.
Two years, whatever it is, two years later now. And, but that was an impressive shotgun. I mean, that thing went down in like a second and a half. I guess, what kind of beer was it? I couldn't tell.
I couldn't tell either.
It almost looked like it was pink, didn't it?
It, it, yeah, I remember trying to figure that out and I was like, I don't know what it was, but that was an impressive shotgun.
I've never had a beer out of a can that looked pink.
Yes.
I can say that.
You can tell he went to Penn State based on that shotgun. They drink like crazy.
Oh, is that right?
Oh my gosh. I mean, that's all they do there is drink.
I thought that was Wisconsin.
Uh, well, I mean, you know, you get to that upper Midwest area. It's just, it's all the same.
It's a long winter, isn't it?
It's a long winter. I mean, gosh, we're having one here as well. It's just crazy. My goodness. Um, first weekend without football. Is this like a depressing time for you or do you get into college basketball mode?
This has been easier for me this year because the Chiefs just got pounded on Sunday. I'm not sure I want to watch football for a while. You know what I mean?
That's a good point.
After watching that, it's like, you don't want to, after you drive home and you've seen a bad wreck and you know it's unfortunate and you think about it for a couple of days, you don't really want to get back on the freeway for a while.
Yeah.
So for me, I think I'm good with football for just a little bit. I, I'm okay until, what is it? The, is it the USFL? What's the name of the league in the spring?
Yeah, they were promoting it at the Super Bowl.
UFL.
UFL. Okay. I'll watch. Will they still just play in one city? Do they still just play in Birmingham?
I don't know what they're doing, but.
They play all around. They play in St. Louis.
Do they?
Let's go. Let's road trip.
Is that the Battle Hawks or whatever over there? Is that that team that they have?
Right.
At the old Rams stadium?
I'm so happy for St. Louis that they have a football team.
I get really into, I mean, my team stinks Villanova, but I start getting more into college basketball now that the season's over. And I, I don't know if you're feeling differently about Jerome Tang, but listen, six straight games.
You know, how do you feel differently about somebody who squandered the first two and a half months of their season with top five, top six NIL dollar talent, did nothing with it, and now they're playing to their potential?
Now, let me just ask you as a devil's advocate, is it harder to mold these teams now if you're getting a whole new team in November?
For everyone, but a lot of coaches are doing it.
Yeah.
And he doesn't. So maybe that isn't the way for him. Maybe he should be recruiting younger, younger players and keeping them in the program longer. Look, they said goodbye to two players that are at Texas and I think, uh, not Creighton, they had two really good players, Carter and, um, oh boy, the name's escaping me. Really good players last year and they just let them go.
Yeah.
And then they brought new ones in. Because why? Because they didn't get along or whatever it was happening. No, if they kept those players, they would have been just fine this year.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I don't think you add 12 new players every year. I think Bill Self's going through some of that.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, KU's dealing with, I mean, they're two years in now to just, by KU standards, complete mediocrity.
Right. But Dennis Gates didn't have trouble at Mizzou. He was 0 and 17 in the league last year and just has turned it around and they're just playing great. I mean, they just crushed Oklahoma Wednesday night. He's got a whole bunch of new talent this year and they're really good and they were really good from the start. We didn't think they were because they were so bad last year, remember?
Yes.
Start of the year, we didn't think Missouri was any good. They've proven to me they're a really good basketball team. They're one of the 25 best.
And they beat Kansas earlier in the year as well. So like, I just wonder if, if how we evaluate coaches is going to change now. If, I mean, Bill Self's not made for coaching new guys every year, it seems like.
You know, I, I do hear a couple of criticisms from Kansas fans that I can deal with when it, when it comes to Bill Self. They're saying this era is not for him. They point to this. What Bill Self was really good at was getting younger players, keeping them on the bench, you know, using their playing time against them as the punishment. You can't punish these kids now. They got, they got millions of dollars. You can't make them run the stairs. There, it's professional basketball. So the things that he was really good at, he can't use those anymore. You can't put a talented player on the bench. They will leave. They will leave in the middle of the season. So he would get young, talented players and he'd really bust them. And by their second year, you'd see massive improvement. He really can't do that anymore. One of the really big chips that he could play year in and year out as a coach, he can't really do anymore.
You know, it's one of the reasons that, um, my guy, Jay Wright, left Villanova. It wasn't as much of that, but he would bring in three star guys and make them NBA players. Guys don't want to do that. They want to play now, right? I mean, they want to show up and play.
And what you want is coaches that connects and oh, if you have an NIL department that's going to buy you players, there is no recruiting.
Yeah.
Like, oh, look at the players Tang recruited. I'm like, he didn't recruit any of them.
Showed them a check.
They spent the sixth most money in NIL in the offseason. So I've got all these K-State buddies of mine and I give them a hard time. You know who'd be great in Manhattan right now? Bruce Weber. They're just buying players. Bruce wouldn't do it. He wouldn't play the game. So he couldn't recruit and he wouldn't cheat. No matter what, that guy wouldn't cheat and break a rule. Now you can just buy that roster? Imagine what he'd be doing with that roster.
Well, that's where.
Cause he's X's and O's. That guy can coach.
Well, that's, I, I totally agree. I'm glad you went there because that's where I think if you're looking for a coach, go to FCS, go to group of five. If a guy can coach basketball, X's and O's, you can do it on any level because there's no recruiting skill anymore if you got the money to do it.
Yeah. A lot of people are talking about the Drake coach and how good he is. And they're just phenomenal this year. I mean, they're so easy to watch. They just move and pass and play defense. They do so many things so well. And a lot of people are looking at schools like that going, okay, great. You bring that guy into the SEC, you give him a $20 million budget or $15 million budget to go out and buy players. Look out.
And he used to be at Northwest Missouri State, one D2 title. He was at Emporia State for a little bit. My father-in-law wants him to be the next head coach at Villanova. He's all in on that guy.
And the KU fans are all like, fire Bill Self, hire the Drake coach. I'm like, oh, come on.
Come on.
You haven't seen it?
Nah, not to that degree.
What part, what part of the phone are you on?
Well, I'm not following the KU fans.
Oh my God.
Are they going nuts?
Full of it. X is full. Oh, it's crazy. They're nuts. They're insane. They're worse than Chiefs fans after Sunday.
They want Bill Self out, some of them?
It's just the fringe.
Yeah, 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 the fringe, the fringe.
But for any Kansas fan to even think that for a second, my phone was blowing up during that game last Saturday.
Wow.
From K, I got a lot of KU friends.
Yeah.
And they were like, this team sucks. Season's over. Spring football, you know, making all kinds of jokes about themselves. I'm like, you got eight, seven, eight more games left before the tournament.
Yeah.
It's going to be okay. The guy can coach.
Yeah. You just got to find that seven, eight man rotation you like, settle in and uh, maybe bring KJ Adams off the bench or something. Maybe go back to that.
Yeah. Your daughters make those little art projects where you put the glue on the paper and then the glitter and stuff. KU has a lot of glue and no glitter.
Yeah.
That's their team this year. They're missing that one guy that when there's two minutes left can take over a game. You set a play up for. Who do you set a play up for at this point? If your Kansas is coming down to one possession, what is the play?
Yeah.
I don't know what that is. I don't think it's Dick, Hunter Dickinson. I mean, he's 20 and 10 every night. He's a heck of a college player, but I don't think you put the game in his hands.
No, no.
I don't know whose, whose hands you put it in. Mayo maybe, but that's probably a jump shot.
Yeah. Well, I'm into it this time of year.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun.
Have a great weekend, great show, my man.
Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it.[1795.98]